Just a question for you. So you started off your presentation with a sentence that I, because I'm so disjointed, I didn't have my pen and it was a little bit down.
Culture.
Culture.
Trump strategy.
Trump strategy.
That was a big topic throughout the model schools was how culture, building of culture relationships comes in.
Thank you.
And I might add, it's one of the reasons we have culture as a top consideration in our reminder page to everyone. Thank you very much for that presentation.
First, I'd like to thank the board for providing us the opportunity to go to model schools. It was a great experience. I've been to a lot of professional development, but never anything that has impacted me as much as model schools. My name's Lucas Sullivan. I'm an associate principal at Horace Good Middle School.
My name's Brad Hill. I'm a PE and weightlifting teacher at Horace Good.
The other two staff members are volleyball coaches, and we're hosting volleyball tonight, so they're unable to make it. But it was Jesse Pinchon, a math teacher at our school, and Adriana Caro, ELA teacher. All the members that went were part of our building leadership team. I thought it was very important to take leaders in our building to this conference. First thing I'm gonna go with is, talk about is Weston Kishnik is somebody that spoke at this conference. I felt very strongly about his message that we need to continue to go forward with technology and try new things, but do not forget about the old practices that are successful. Some of the things he talked about, you know, writing letters. Our students, that's something that I don't feel like our students, you know, are great at. Or first day of middle school, opening a locker, opening the lock. That's something that, some of those old school things that Weston talked about, and it goes together with the technology. Other thing he talked about, technology's great, and I appreciate the iPads and the one-to-one initiative that's coming down, especially at our level. But without good instruction or good pedagogy, the iPads may not be, you know, used greatly. So it's a combination of the tool and effective teaching. So don't forget about the effective teaching, and he really talked about those things. The book, Bold School, is something that our BLT will be doing as a book study, and we're hopeful to do that as an entire staff.
And then, one thing he talked about was, high school coaches, they break down film. They're constantly watching, seeing where they can improve. And he said, why aren't teachers and, you know, coaches, instructional coaches doing the same thing? So that, you know, as a coach, that really was like an aha moment for me. So one of the first weeks of school, I actually filmed myself, and I already deleted it because I can't stand, you know, watching yourself talk. But there were some things that, you know, you can obviously, you can pick up on, then eventually, that's something that we'd like to do, you know, as a staff, you know, share that video with somebody else, and you know, maybe ask them, you know, what, what do you think? What can I do to make myself better?
Yeah, it's something that started at an individual basis, and then eventually go into our content teams, and they can share video with each other, and maybe learn from each other, and have constructive, very good. Again, I hear relationships over and over again, culture at Horace Good, that's something we believe. If you can build relationships, then everything else will take care of itself. And model schools, every session I went to talked about culture and relationships, and I mean, that was the theme throughout. So some of the things, you know, it's important to be there and build relationships, say good morning to as many students as we can in the morning, and it's not just teachers, not just admin, it's the custodian staff, it's the lunch people, it's the certified staff that we have in the work in the mornings that greet. I know one thing that I see that's great, we have some of our students help the custodians during lunch. You know, when they're done eating, they'll help the custodians, and they work together. And just to see that relationship building is awesome. And so, you know, we want to be present during that lunch period, you know, offside down at the table and just talk to kids. And then increasing positive referrals, that's one piece of data that we have a lot of, not good referrals, and not a lot of positive referrals. So my goal this year is to increase the positive referrals, and let's reward the kids that are doing things right. And then, along with that, we have HG Elite, and that's a, that's a group that you get points throughout the year. It's grades, it's attendance, it's missing assignments, it's negative referrals, you get positive points for positive referrals. And that group at the end of each semester will be doing, get a prize. Last year, you know, they got donuts in the morning, we wanted to take them to the movies. So, and last year, we also got all the, all the kids that qualified for that, T-shirts that said HG Elite, and the kids loved it. And that's something we want to expand upon going into this year. And then, the one thing that I took away, I went to a middle school session, a model school, middle school from Georgia, and they really looked at different electives, and different electives that applied what we're learning in our core subjects. And so, that's something that I really wanted to start going into this year, and something that we're already doing with youth entrepreneurship. We started a Halo Club this year, Science Olympia has been a club that we even had kids go to state last year, that could be a class to apply some things in science. Robotics is something that we're looking at getting started this year. And so, I sent out to staff just a survey. If you could teach any elective, if you could have one class that you would teach, your green class. I had over 50 different class offerings that teachers were willing to teach. And it was, that was kind of an aha moment, from what I took from that middle school, and applying it to our staff. And now, I did that, thinking, okay, well, let's start looking at adding these electives to the, to our offerings. And the teachers are like, when does it start? And I go, well, it's gonna take some time to do, to do this, and it's gonna take some scheduling, and some flexibility, and things like that. But, you know, we have teachers that are, that are really good at other things, or have, you know, interests in other avenues, and so that's some of the, just some of the electives that came back to us. But I think if we could get, you know, one kid to want to come to school for that elective, then you're making a difference for that kid. So I feel like the increased student excitement and engagement, almost all these have real world applications, and quality lesson plans. And also, I think this is a way of staff recruitment and retention. If I go to a recruiting fair and say, hey, you're teaching social studies all day, but you get one elective of something that you really enjoy, that might be enough to get that teacher to come to Horace Good or Garden City. So I really feel strongly about the electives. It's gonna be a work in progress, obviously, resources, scheduling, things like that. But our staff's on board, and it's something we started this year, but it's really gonna be a project that goes into future years. So kind of all the takeaways that we got the most. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Carrie Otero. I'm the freshman academy principal.
I'm Rebecca Bullen.
I'm Cody Morrison. I teach freshman biology.
All right, well, culture, Trump strategy was the common theme, which you've been hearing a lot of tonight. There were three different ideas that were common in four of the sessions that I attended, and one of those was celebrating and publicizing all the good things that are happening, all the great things teachers are doing, the great things students are doing. Mentor moments. What that is, is where you take an at-risk student, and you match them with another staff member in the building, and that staff member goes out of their way to really get to know that kid and build relationships with them. So that was common, they had different names for it, but, and the other thing was be visible, ask questions, and listen. And Dr. Adam Drummond had said engaging in conversations with students around their learning task tells you more about instructional excellence than just watching the teachers instruct. And so, really getting to know the students, so like going in with walkthroughs, and actually going and talking to the students while you're in there, or talking to students in the halls about what's going on and how things are going, will really help you get to know more about what's happening in the classrooms. And so, my takeaways from this was, I want to increase more of my social media posts. I had started that last year. I went back and looked at some of the posts I've had, and it, so I really want to get out there and increase that, and really celebrate all the great things that are happening in our classrooms, because there's stuff happening every day. And I think it's important for everybody to know our story, and know what's going on in our, in our schools. The other thing is identifying our at-risk students. That's something that we have done, and we kind of let it go, and we just didn't do as serious as I'd like. So this year, my goal is to really buckle down with that, and, and help teachers with ideas of how to build those relationships with students, and how to connect with them. The other thing is spending more time in classrooms, and more time talking with students. I went to a session where an assistant principal had set a goal of 500 walkthroughs, and every time he was doing a walkthrough, he was posting on social media the great things he was seeing. And he met his goal, and so now I've made it my goal. So I'm gonna get in 500 classrooms this year. So that, that was one of my big takeaways, and.
Okay. So for me, my big takeaways were a lot of growth mindset. I am, I'm a very positive person, and people really hate me in the morning because I come in bouncing off the walls. And so, being a science teacher, I have gotten to the point where I need to teach the students not just to get the right answer, but they need to learn to accept their failure. If they miss the, if their hypothesis is rejected, if they're, you know, doing something and they don't get what they wanted in the first time, the first time around, I want to push them to say, okay, what can we learn from this? And this is a big thing for me, is that I've been reading this book from Maui, he was one of the key speakers in his book, and I'm taking up his challenge, because I'm gonna try to find him one time when I'm flying, and get a free sandwich from him. But his big thing is the turbo button. You need to take the time, and then when something is presented to you, and it's ready to do it, you go for it. You hit that button, you run with it. That's what he did, and he gave a great story, and he started off just very personal, and then he gave great real-world examples, everything. And so, that's the big turbo button that I want to push with my students, and say, okay, when something comes up, hit it and go with it. Don't just sit back and watch and say, what if, what if I would have done it? Do it. And then that goes with the power of yet, and getting the students, instead of saying, I can't, they can say yet, and that goes with the whole growth mindset. And then, for me, I'm fortunate, my family does posters and all that, so right after model schools, I went back to my sister, and I said, I need to make a sticker, and I made this whole wall poster of growth mindset. Had it made, I didn't even tell Carrie, I just put it up, and I was like, she'll be fine with it. So I have that in the freshman academy, just to liven the color up. Yes, it's all green, but it's all gray walls. So I'm like, okay, we're gonna have this. But my goal for myself is to make monthly posters. I want to make monthly posters, quotes, and Carrie's already started with the quotes around the academy, within the bathrooms and everything. But I want to liven it up, and just start getting these positive posters, and getting students to realize, okay, this isn't just us throwing something there, it's contagious. Once you start, it's gonna go, and you're gonna get people, like I have some coworkers that are kind of, they're a little shy behind this, they're like, I don't think it will work. They're breaking their shell, and they're actually seeing it work now. And so, that was my big takeaway, is just get the power of positive thinking.
One of the things that I took away the most is, it's one of the three Rs, and I really got into the power of relevance. Being in an English classroom a lot of times, and especially being in high school, they really like to ask, why? Why am I learning this? So it is really important in a classroom to have, to have them and help them really understand why this lesson is happening. Like, I'm not just doing this to torture you. It has a reason, there is a purpose. And really, when they understand why they're doing something, they are more likely to be more engaged. When they understand what it's gonna help them do, and that it's really not just torture for my own enjoyment, that it really is, that when they understand why they're learning something, that they are more likely to really grab on and be more engaged. And then, this was just something that we were given, it's a lot of work, but it is a rubric that you can put your lessons against. And this is just the relevance, they have a rubric for the rigor as well, too. But just something that when you're looking at a lesson, you can look at it, and how students are involved, and then where it falls on this rubric. Then, part of that is that it's okay, like not every single lesson has to be all the way over in the well-developed side. You know, you want to cover every part of that rubric, you know, because there will be parts where, you know, the well-developed, like yes, the students are doing it on their own, but you have to start off with, you know, with me doing it. And then, to have fully well-rounded lessons, it's good to make sure you have enough lessons that are on all parts of that rubric. And then, things I want to add is, it really is just, like I just kind of realized my aha moments were like, I, like doing short stories right now, that there are, I have added a few that I do just because they're some of my favorites. But I really didn't have a solid why. And so, we have actually started going through, and we are learning how to use context clues to understand vocabulary. So when they have words that they don't understand, we're going back through, and it's kind of like a little classroom competition. They're all in groups, they go through, they come up, I give them some words, and I, where they are in the story, they go back, they have to read around the word, and try and figure out what the definition is. And then, before we actually go back and discover what it is. And it seems like something that's really simple, but it, it really helps when there are words that they don't get, you know, and thinking about, you know, when they get out into the world and doing things like reading a lease agreement, or reading a contract for employment, if there's something in there that they don't get, because it happens, that they can use what's there, what is in the document, then to discover what this word means that they don't understand. So that really was my huge takeaway, was just making sure that they know why they're learning this. Is they, that's one of their favorite questions to ask.
So the theme for model schools this year was being the difference. And that term is so powerful. It's taking everything that you learn, and figuring out a way to apply it, and actually, it's not everything you learn, because I tell every group every year, what you learn is overwhelming. If you could just take one key component, and go back, and really advocate for that component, and if you do it as a building, you're going to get further, and as you can see, I think they bought into that this year, and they, they're really running full speed ahead with what they believe can move their building forwards. So they are being the difference, they're not just making a difference. So I appreciate you listening to us tonight. I know that was a lot of information, but if you have no idea what three or four days does of that in that place. Any questions?
There's four different presentations.
Renee, so we've heard from four different schools that went to the conference. So are those four schools the only ones doing these projects?
So, so this is our fifth or sixth year of sending groups to model schools. We're still one group who's short of getting every building to model schools. We should finalize that next year. So that will build, and a couple will do a repeat next year. So that should really start building the capacity of every building having that experience of the actual conference. But culture, Trump strategy has been the theme all seven years of the conference. So every building gets that reinforced every year, and then the conference just stresses the new strategies to make that happen. And so, every year builds upon the next, and we're, we're building that capacity in our teachers. One thing to note, like this was the first year I think we've ever taken a PE teacher, a counselor, and a social worker. But that's key, where we have to represent every dynamic in a school there is, from, from every content area. And if the PE teacher realizes, if I watch myself teach and can be more effective, that's probably gonna be equally as powerful to the English teacher and the math teacher. And if the counselor can take a lesson on perseverance to the classes she's teaching, that's also gonna help kids cope socially and emotionally. So I, I'm really pleased with the, you know, the vast amount of different contents, and to really start building that.
I guess, you know, last year, we heard a whole different presentation of what school was doing. So the thing that I saw tonight seemed like some pretty cool stuff, so, you know, why, how did the other schools get to do the red tree or?
Well, in the past, I've kind of taken the themes, I, I have them come up with common themes, and they just gave you an update of what they learned at the conference. And this year, I put the challenge to the group of, I want you to present how you're gonna use what you've learned in your schools. So I changed up how they presented, because I want you to know that they are putting this stuff into practice, and you probably haven't seen that.
I like the piece where they're getting parents, you know, reaching out to the parents and helping educate them on how they can utilize the things they're going to learn at school and at home, so.
Yeah, as all of these presentations were taking place tonight, I was thinking, I've gotta make sure that I mark, document a lot of these in our board goals progress, because so many of what they mentioned tonight, that a lot of our board goals.
Excited, thank you.
Yeah, yes.
I feel like I heard the tired yet when we, when we got that evaluation done in service. So is that a place where they're able to share some of what they're bringing back and share, collaborate with their peers?
Yeah, I asked anyone who went to model schools if they wanted to share a presentation at the back-to-school in service. Skylar and Julie did it twice. They did it for all of our principals in service, and then they offered two sessions at the back-to-school in service for teachers, and I think all of them were full, just phenomenal. And of course, our back-to-school speaker, Dr. Carlin, spoken of power to yet at the initial welcome, and so we're really, perseverance, you've heard probably in the past all the Engage New York and Eureka Math presentations, because they really stress perseverance. But finally, we're seeing that in all content areas. You have to work hard to be successful, and that's the power of yet. Might not be able to do it now, but there is a yet.
I would just like to thank all of our teachers and administrators that took time out of their summer to go and attend the model schools conference. That was all on individual time, and I know it's a great conference, but they're still giving up your time, and we really appreciate your dedication and, and your work to take that information and put it into practice. So thanks for your extra efforts and all of that.
Yeah, I would echo that, too. Thank you very much.
You know, I, I heard a lot of positive things about the different approaches, everything from the extra cheer, which we have, to if I can take one child, if we can catch one child and encourage them in a way that they want to come to school, that is pretty effective. And, and the whole culture, Trump strategy, environment. I think we have talked about that for years, and I think, despite changing culture, it takes a while. And, you know, getting the training in there for all the good folks that are attending that ball conference, and in each of the classrooms, in each of the buildings, and in that collaboration, building family, I heard. You know, that environment is, that is so positive, I think, is so effective. And I wonder whether we sort of lose some of that as we move up into the grades. Horace Good had some wonderful presentation there. Kids change, you know, and their mold is, and all of that. But that positive thing is pretty effective, just having seen kids, both that are sharp and almost self-doers, to the ones that just can't seem to turn in that paper on time. And some of the, even at the high schools, some of the recent policy, I'm a little concerned that we're not looking very carefully at the culture and encouraging that, that child. So I think maybe a little more discussion, a little more discussion. It's so good to see not only the talent of the teachers, and the excitement of those of you that attend, but also how you're applying that in the school and in the collection. Okay, with that wonderful set of presentations, we move on. We have comprehensive assessment system. Don't take it personally.
I told Monica, watch, I'll leave.
Culture of comprehensive assessment.
So I think in the, you received a digital copy of the comprehensive assessment plan. It's pretty large, it's about the pages altogether. So I'm not gonna read every page, I'm just gonna highlight a key, a couple of key things, and then answer any questions if you have any. This will, I'll present this to the curriculum council in October. And I did, since it is so large, I did make myself some notes, so I don't go way off base, so, have you seen me glancing out? That's why. So some of the components of the assessment that I want to review with you all is the, the assessment philosophy and purpose, the actual comprehensive assessment systems, the types of tests we give, just general assessment information, the annual cycle of assessment, our assessment program, how that fits within our assessment framework. And then, I picked a few grade levels, just to kind of show you what that looks like at a grade level. So our philosophy, our district's philosophy behind assessment is, assessment serves as a way to measure, monitor, and report student progress on achievement of grade level standards. It provides students with multiple opportunities to demonstrate, apply, and reflect on their development as a learner. And it's a way to communicate to all stakeholders data relating to strengths, as well as areas for improvement, in order to guide our instruction and our learning outcomes. And then, our purpose for assessment is to measure student understanding of grade level standards and concepts, to monitor students' progression of growth, of grade level content, to report students' areas of strength, areas for improvement, and the growth of grade level standards to our students, our parents, and then other stakeholders, to provide evidence for action and process for engaging continuous improvement, to allow for student reflection of their learning, and to inform stakeholders to maintain accountability. So this piece is in the assessment plan, I believe it's on page three. And I'm gonna refer to this a lot over the next couple of slides, so I do have a printed copy, if you want one, or if you can, if you have it, pull it up digitally, that's fine as well. So this just shows the types of assessments that we use as a district over the course of the school year. So from one end is a student coming in, and then by the time they leave our district, we want them college or career-ready, or both. So there's different types of assessments that we use. Not every assessment is a formal high-stakes test. We're constantly checking with students to make sure that they understand what we're teaching, and then developing a plan for instruction to continue. So these are just the different types of assessments. We start with universal screeners, and then move through the different components. So I'm just gonna briefly describe each of those, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, but just so you kind of get the understanding of the differences.
Can I have one of your ones?
Yes. And in that document, the assessment plan towards the end, I think it's page 63, I do, we do break down each type of assessment, what its purposes are, what it's not intended for, and then the main stakeholders or users of that data. So, you know, for example, like a universal screener would not be used for grading purposes, and we include that in the document to help clarify for all of our stakeholders what it's meant for and what it's not. So that first, it looks kind of like a rectangle, or assessment that students move through is our universal screener. So this identifies students who may be at risk. It's a real broad kind of net to catch some kids that maybe red flags appear with. It doesn't take very much time, it's a real quick snapshot of how kids do.
Is this something we use now?
Yes.
Okay, so we're incorporating things that we do now.
Yes, yeah, so everything I'll talk about today is what we're currently, what we're currently doing. So you may hear a lot of talk about Fastbridge, which is our universal screener that we're, it's new this year, we replaced games web with, but that's our universal screener. So some of these things, if you're firm to like healthcare, like a universal screener would be going into the doctor's office and just having that conversation with, okay, what's going on, what are some areas, or how are you feeling, and then some red flags popping up in hand, we need to check into these a little more. A diagnostic assessment, diagnosis strengths. A diagnostic assessment diagnoses strengths and weaknesses in students' existing knowledge. So it's a little more, a little more specific on how students are doing. So for example, if I know there's an issue with reading, but I want to know more what the exact issue is, I would do a diagnostic assessment, which one we use is called DRA. So this would be in the doctor's office, for example, there's some red flags, I'll introduce some additional blood work, additional scans, to get a little more specific information on the students. And then formative assessments, there's all different types of formative assessments. These are ones that teachers are doing all the time, so not necessarily a formal multiple choice or high stakes assessment. So there's three different types of formal formative assessments. These things are not necessarily, I don't know, I kind of, I didn't, I kind of made them up, I guess, just to kind of explain more of what the difference is, because formative assessment covers so much. So you can kind of divide it into three different categories. So there's continuous formative assessments, which is things I'm doing as students are learning. So I'm questioning, I'm having conversations, I may do a quick check at the end. These are just things I'm noticing as I'm, as I'm teaching. Informal formative assessments would be assessments for learning. So it's kind of an informal check, did my kids understand what I'm teaching, or did they not? And then what am I going to do about that? So let's say I'm in the middle of a lesson, and I'm just, it's all blank screens. No one is catching what I'm trying to teach, here's what I would adjust and move forward. So it's more, it's more for learning how I'm going to adjust what I'm doing to keep moving forward. And then a more formal, formal formative assessment would be assessments of learning. Did they understand what I'm teaching? This could start to play into grades, it may not, it doesn't have to. This would be more like a exit ticket at the end of the day, so I can quickly check if the students understood what I was talking about. So this, to me, would be more like a, like a running log, like maybe, sorry.
Isn't it not like a pop quiz or anything like that?
It could be, I guess it was used at the end of a lesson, hey, did you, like a quick check on the way out, did you understand what I was teaching? If you used it at the beginning of the, let's say you come back and I give it to you first thing in the morning, it's just a little harder to adjust my instruction for the day if I just get that information. So, I mean, it could be, but a little harder to use it the way it's intended. This would be just like the constant monitoring. So if I'm like monitoring my, you know, blood sugar counts, or the doctor asks me to monitor like what I'm eating, so just the constant assessing and checking of what I'm, what I'm doing. So benchmark assessments, these are monitor students' progress on immediate or long-term learning goals. So my formives are real small windows of snapshots, did my kids get it or not? And benchmarks start to get a little more broad. So this might be a chapter assessment, or math calls and module assessments, maybe a, you know, midsemester assessment, things like that. So a broader range of assessing what the kids are learning instead of just a small, a small window. So this would be in comparison to, again, going back in, maybe doing another physical or checkup, or work, or things like that. And then a summative assessment, this is, when people say assessments, this is what usually comes to mind. This would be like our state assessments, or our semester, end-of-semester assessments. So it's really just our final performance, how did you do, what did you learn? They can be used in some way to drive instruction, but it would be more like a global, like this is how my kids did this year, what am I going to do for the next group of kids coming next year? This is kind of like the end, the final, not a whole lot I can do until the next year with that, with that student or that content. So just kind of a brief, so when I say assessments and talk about all the different ones, it not, it isn't necessarily those high stakes assessments that we hear about a lot at board meetings. Another piece that I had in there is, I called it the annual cycle of assessment, and this is really just how we use each assessment throughout the year. And so if it's not, if we're using an assessment and we're not able to do one of these, then we really need to look at what is the purpose of the assessment? Is it relevant to our kids? Is it still providing this information that's useful? If not, what, what do we need to do? Do we need to replace it with something else? Is it something we no longer need? So we don't just say, hey, we're going to do this assessment and never look at that again. Every single year, we're evaluating what are our goals for this, what are our results saying, is it helping us improve? And if it's not doing those things, then we're, then we're looking at reviewing and reworking to adjust that. So I did, I didn't really mention this at the beginning, but this document's really meant to be a working document and adjusting as we're, as we're moving. So for identifying weaknesses or areas maybe that we're testing, we're looking at testing, we're doing two things that are testing the same thing, we can identify, hey, maybe we need to eliminate one. So this is a, with the annual review of each assessment, we'll also be with our plan, how to adjust it, is it reading or not reading.
So have you guys identified things that they're continuing doing because of this annual assessment assessment?
So we're starting, especially with our new screening tool, which we're using this year, there's a few things that I know in my mind that I want to keep a close eye on because I think we're going to start to get some duplicate data. And so we haven't, we didn't eliminate anything yet, just because we don't want to drop something off and then decide six months later we got to add it back in. But this process, this assessment system process plus eliminate has really helped us get all of our data in one place, so we can really see where we have duplicates. So before, we kind of had data in folders, and different teachers had different tests they gave, and different things they collected. Well, I may be testing the same thing you were testing around the hallway, but there wasn't a lot of, really no way to put that in the same place, so we knew that. And now, eliminate's really helped us identify, hey, we, we have a lot in this area, we're doing it all of that, and then also, hey, we're missing some in this area.
So do you wait to the, do you do it at the half-year, do you do a half-year assessment of what you're doing, or do you wait through the whole year and then?
I guess if there, I would say at the end of every year, just because we can get the long range, especially with something like Fastbridge, it's new, so it may work fall to winter, but it doesn't work winter to spring, you know, I need to make a decision that we regret. But if there is something that needs to address right away, then that, we have the flexibility to do that, so.
You know, wouldn't it be probably safe to say that based on your graph here of informal formative assessments, things like that that happen in the classroom, some of this happens, you know, MTSS happens continually, not just annually?
Right.
And in our board goal discussion, it sounded like something you...